How do I get that screen? Okay, we're called at Word of the Franklin Regional School. Excuse me.
It's not working.
It's not working? Okay, excuse me, we're going to start the Franklin Regional School Directors Committee of the whole meeting for February 13th, 2023. We're in executive session from 6:45 to 7:28 for legal, contractual, and personnel issues. Dr. Pryor, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really excited, as you can see, we have a room full of visitors tonight, and it's really focused on the work of our students and the work of our staff. And it's really a testament to what happens in Franklin Regional each and every single day. And a lot of the work that we've been doing to really focus on ensuring that all kids are able to achieve their hopes and their dreams. And so I'm going to quickly jump into this and turn it over to Dr. Tanya Santamont, our middle school principal, and she's going to introduce our Middle School Students of the Month. Dr. Santamont.
Good evening, and thank you again for allowing us to come and to present our wonderful students. I'm going to get started recognizing our December Students of the Month, and the characteristic was critical thinking. And I'd like to start with Grade Six, Grace Stark. Grade Seven, Alexis Thompson. Grade Eight, Shiuli. And then for January, our characteristic was creativity, and Grade Six was Molly Perks. Grade Seven, Daphne Barnes. And Grade Eight, Seven Fortino. Thank you again, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, students, congratulations.
So next up, I have Mrs. Susan Ladon and members of the Math Madness team in terms of, and to talk about their success in the National Math Madness Competition. And I have to say that I don't even know that they realize that some of the schools that they beat or were successful over were included the number one ranked school in the country.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Yeah, so.
Thanks for having us. So we had about 17 students total who were on our team. And to just give you a little idea about what Math Madness was, we got into it during the lockdown, which was great because it was a fully online tournament, and still is, but it really worked well when we were all at home in the spring of 2020. So that's when we started. But we actually won our bracket last year and this year, so the kids have been doing really great. It's similar to March Madness. You have a bracket competition where they go head to head with a particular school, and then the winner of that progresses in the tournament. So we, this year, we went against schools from all over the country and won every time. So we got to go on and finish winning our tournament. I just wanted to introduce, do you want me to introduce the students?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so first, we have Isaac Eaton, and Isaac is in ninth grade. Jason Lee is also in ninth grade. Noah Eaton, also in ninth grade, and then Adia Jamani. We have Gavin Litchock, Cruz Lamanna, Anthony Poole, Lucas Kozic in the back there in the white shirt. They're all in ninth grade. So then we have Junior John Serski. We have Senior Tim Cowell, Senior Josh Selva Kumar, Junior Pranil Chandru, and Junior, Senior Pranil Varshney back there. So that was our team. We had a couple students who couldn't be here, but they came once a week and participated in a 30-minute match, and they were some pretty hard problems. So very pleased with their success.
Congratulations. Yes.
I'd like to comment.
Sure.
First of all, congratulations to all of you students and to your parents because they obviously support you. And this is a huge team effort, and to the teachers who, and the administrators, Ron, and all the other people. I just wanted to comment that that's what makes education, is the parents, the students, the teachers, the administration, the other people. The school that you competed against is a perennial winner in this competition and has, comes from the center of the city of Philadelphia, which is a rough area. And, but I just want to comment, it's teachers and people who create this, not buildings. Sometimes we get born in on buildings. Just everyone knows Julia B. Masterman was constructed in 1932, four years before I was born, and is still in the historic, is a historic building in Pennsylvania and still produces some of the finest students that come. And you guys should be congratulated to have beat them, but remember, they'll be back next year.
That's the school we beat in the finals, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for that history, we didn't know that, thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to, if I could, Pranil Varshney, who's in the back here, since we're talking about math success, there is a competition every year, again, a national competition called the American Mathematics Competition. And it focuses, and there's an eighth grade test, a 10th grade, and 11th, and 12th grade, based on what year you're on, based on what test you take. Students then who reach a certain level of success go on to take the AIME, AME, or American Invitational Mathematics Exam. And only 2.5 to 5% of students who take the AMC go on to take the AME. And Pranil started taking the AMC as an eighth grader and has five for five gone and progressed to the AIME. And there are years we had no one progress.
Wow.
I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. So last week, a couple weeks ago, you probably saw that we hired a Director of Instruction and Support Services. That position previously was held by Ms. DeFovio, prior to her becoming the Assistant Superintendent. And really, her work was preparing for the work that you're going to hear about tonight, and that's the multi-tiered system of support. And the multi-tiered system of support is something that we're developing K to eight to ensure that our students receive instruction, that not only gets them up to grade level, but also may provide them enrichment or other services. But it's really ensuring that all of our students are meeting the benchmark, and there's some great work happening, and our students are doing some great things under the support and work of our staff. And there's a lot of people working around this, and I'm going to introduce the teachers here in a moment. But I have to tell you that I had the opportunity to sit in on some of these meetings pertaining to students and to ensuring, looking at meaningful student data, not just the PSSA, but really going back, and matter of fact, the students you could see today don't even take the PSSA, looking at our internal data systems and really designing intervention and enrichment for students that meet their needs. And it's really an investment in building these systems. And the people who have started to do that are doing some fantastic work, some of the best that I've seen in my 26, 27 years in education. And so before they start, I just wanted to preface and talk about how proud I am of them, because I know once they start introducing our students, we're all going to focus on them as we should, but there's a lot of work happening that we should be commending with the staff, because it's not easy. Their job, their jobs are not easy jobs, and they're getting out and getting out in front of it. And I'm proud of them. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Meehan and Mrs. Callahan. Wasn't sure if Sue was. And Mrs. Ryber's here as well.
Hi, I'm Audra Meehan. I'm a former kindergarten teacher, now an MTSS Coordinator. So as a primary school, we are committed to providing students with opportunities to reach their full potential. So by aligning our practices to a multi-tiered system of supports, we are able to meet their needs and the needs of all of our students. The MTSS framework is the practice of matching student needs to high-quality, research-based instruction, intervention, and enrichment. We use universal screening data to make informed decisions that will support students' growth and achievement. The MTSS process and structure guides the core team, as Dr. P referenced in our meetings, as we design, implement, and evaluate the academic, emotional, and behavioral needs of the students. Our focus is to create a culture of best practices for academics and social and emotional learning. Remediation and building of foundational skills allows all kids to have access to enrichment opportunities, and our MTSS framework helps us identify the needs that need the remediation. So through this, we are able to provide students with a comprehensive, well-rounded education. I have Mrs. Callahan with us, she's a first-grade teacher, and what we worked on together was using math and different strategies in math, and giving students an opportunity to learn and grow using their strategies, and she's going to give a little bit more information.
She's a great partner. I will work with her any day. We worked on, in December, we do a big gingerbread unit, so we decided, well, during that time we were practicing how to solve problems with addition and subtraction and how many different strategies there are, because kids, we use one strategy? Does everyone use the same strategy? No, because we're all what? Exactly. So what we did was we decided we would make it so that it was gingerbread man, you've got to get him across the river so he doesn't get eaten by the fox, or he doesn't get soggy, huh? To do that, they had to earn 12 blocks to code a Finch robot. How are they going to earn those 12 blocks? They had to solve 12 story problems by working with partners, and they had to read it, they had to talk about their strategies, and the partners, one could use one strategy, one could use the other, but they were there to assist each other and work together. Lot of math talk, lot of talking about math, which was really fun to watch. And if they got across the bridge successfully, they solved their 12-story problems, they got across, they got to have their Finch robot do a victory dance. That was fun, wasn't it? Yeah. And we, and I assisted, we assisted as needed. And today, the students are going to read a little speech to you that they wrote, I just typed it up, but they wrote it, and posters that the whole class made, and we're going to show you a little video. But I did want you to, let you know, they are a little bit, what did you, what word did you just make up?
Nervous.
Because you're scared and excited at the same time. So the story problem we're going to be using, for example, is that the ginger man's friend, the elf, played six tricks. Then he played five more. So how many tricks did he do? Different strategies. So now, the best presenters, here they are. What grade is this? What grade?
Act it out, it's like tricks. We act it out, then we know if we need to add or subtract. We can use circle drawings to figure out the equations. We draw circles to show adding or subtracting. Let me show you. So this is people using circles, and these are people acting out.
Do you know touch math? Touch math is numbers that have dots. When you count to five, you touch the dots one time. One, two, three, four, five, stop! When you, when you reach six, you touch some of the dots two times. Six, seven, eight, nine. For every equation, you lock the num, the big number in your head. Then you count up or down to find the answer. Let me show you. You put the six in your head, and then you count to seven. One, two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Very good.
Doubles are addends that are equal to each other. Near doubles are very close to being doubles. Back families are three numbers that go together to make two addition and two subtraction equations. We look at the equation to see if any of these will help us solve it. Let me show you. So six plus five equals eleven, so that's, because I know that because five plus five equals ten, and six plus six equals twelve. Like you either add, subtract one to make eleven, or add one to make eleven. If I wanted to make, so I wanted to get to eleven, because eleven is six, but five equals eleven.
There you go.
When we do math mountains, we draw a mountain with pluses and minuses and the numbers. Then we circle and write the equation, then we find the answer. Let me show you.
She might want to hold the microphone so everybody can hear.
Yeah, that's it, there you go.
So I do the math mountain. I do the math mountain, and then the two minuses on the sides, and then I put the plus right here, and the six over here, and the five over here. Then I circled my equation, and then I wrote the, the answer.
Very good, you did a great job. And throughout this process, we were practicing our forever skills, weren't we? Here they are.
When we did the story problems, if we made a mistake, we fixed it. Together, we showed our work, about our work. When we worked with the Finch robot, it sometimes got off the bridge. We tried again and put a different coding block in the, then we, then it did not fall off.
Good, we have to talk into that comeback here, we're not used to a microphone. There we go, right there.
We tried with the story problems right here, and then on this side, we did the Finch robot, and then we, like, we did, like, the waters right here, and this is the bridge, so we tried to knock it off.
Good job. Good communication. Ready? All righty.
My friend did math equations with me. We used math mountains, a number line, a ten chart, and counting, and circle drawings. We had fun. Then my friend did not know that the answer was to 12 plus 3, so I helped her do it. She used touch math, she did great. We worked together to get our right answer. The drawing and do a victory dance. It was so much fun, working with a friend. We used our other C, and we used 12 plus 3. We did a great job doing it. Over here, we did a lot of math equations over here, so we did it a lot.
Very good job.
We solved the story problem in different ways. We then worked with the robot. We fixed the path when it went the wrong way. We didn't get it right on the first try. We made the path a different way each time until we got it right. It was fun. So here's us like doing like five plus five equals 10, then like us doing like it with dots. And we're doing robots and like doing different ways.
When we were done getting the gingerbread man across the bridge, we made a victory dance. We made him sound like ja ja ja. We made him make red, blue, black, and green lights. We also made him spin, turn. Everyone had a different victory dance. This is me, and this is Miles, and we did equations, and then the indie bots doing the turns and lights and the sounds.
I am so proud of you, first graders, you were amazing. I think we have a little video to show what you guys did, are you ready? Thank you for letting us share that with you, they were so excited.
Thank you.
We're actually, what is it again? It's guided. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's first grade, first grade. Wow. Their coding. Did you see that?
Okay, Dr. Pryor, anything else?
That concludes the Superintendent's Report for this evening.
Thank you very much, great report. Okay, public comments. We have two public comments tonight. Kristi Troutman.
I don't think my comments are going to be nearly as interesting, I apologize in advance. My name is Kristi Troutman, I live at 4043 Sloanwood Drive, and I'm here to offer two suggestions related to the first read policies that are in your packet for review. So before I launch into my specific comments, I wanted to say a couple of things. One is, I have enormously high regard for how this district is run and administered. And so by offering comments, it's not meant as any kind of critique or anything else for how things are being done, but that policy is a way to encode what we believe in our practice, and then to set up accountability, so that if there are ways that we're falling short of what we wish, then there's accountability and metrics so that we can learn and do better, which I believe is core to how you all govern this district. And the second is that the theme of my comments is about our responsibility to our most vulnerable students, and that across Pennsylvania and across the United States, students with disabilities are being referred to police in schools and in the community at alarmingly high rates. I have no data on what's happening in practice at Franklin Regional, but I think that's one of the things that we need to be paying attention to. And so one of my comments has to do with a threat assessment policy, which includes responsibility for annual reporting back to the board around accountability, which makes a lot of sense. There are a number of items laid out for what should be conveyed annually. I would suggest, encourage you before the second read, to add one thing, which is ask for data to be disaggregated by disability status, race, and gender. Not to give you specific information that would violate the privacy of individual students, I don't mean that, but at the aggregate, to see what's the percentages, and are the percentages proportional to the school district, or do we have some disproportionality that needs attention, or at least requires some question. So I think that that makes sense as a way to be able to see, is, are these national trends things that play out here at Franklin Regional or not, by disaggregating data and just looking at it and seeing. The second is in the school security personnel policy. Under the school's security guards, one of the areas of responsibility is assistance with disruptive students. This is an area that I can appreciate the school wants discretion around, but there's pretty broad discretion in assistance with disruptive students. What I'm aware of nationally and in Pennsylvania is that a lot of students who have IEPs and 504 plans, if their educational needs are not being met, that can yield disruptive behavior in school. Disruptive behavior that should trigger an IEP meeting or educational attention. But that often what happens is that those students, those disruptive behaviors, end up being handled as disciplinary matters, or putting a student with disabilities to the attention of the police for things that were related to their disability. I'm sure that's not what your intention would be, and so after this first read, I ask that you put, ask administration to just add clarity to that definition and parameters around what assistance with disruptive students means, so that you're properly protecting the most vulnerable kids in our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, the four parameters that you wanted, you suggested desegregating.
By disability.
Yeah.
Gender, race were the things. And I assume by age.
And age, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Ling, Burnett Drive, Murraysville. I'm here tonight to talk about the recent addition of the COVID-19 shot to the CDC's Recommended Child and Adolescent Immunization Schedule. The CDC does not set the requirements for schools, but state or local jurisdictions do. According to the National Academy for State Health Policy... According to the National Academy for State Health Policy, at least 21 states, including California at the latest, have banned COVID vaccines from being included in school mandates as of February 6th of this year. Pennsylvania has made no statement of banning this requirement for entry to public school for the upcoming year. I'm not here to debate any morality, efficacy, danger, or injury issues from the shot this evening. I'm here to clarify exemptions for parents that exist in the event that this does become a requirement by edict of the PA Department of Health so that parents have options and to ask that the school district make this information readily available on its website. Because local school boards have no control over the requirements that are set by the PA Department of Health and the uncertainty exists as to whether PA will set this as a requirement for school entry in the fall, I would like parents to be aware that there are exemptions that are accepted by public schools in Pennsylvania besides medical ones. Title 28, Part 3 of the Pennsylvania Code, Section 23.84, Exemption from Immunization states, A, medical exemption, which is pretty self-explanatory, and B, religious exemption. Children need not be immunized if the parent, guardian, or emancipated child objects in writing to the immunization on religious grounds or on the basis of a strong moral or ethical conviction similar to a religious belief. It is important to understand that one does not have to attend church devoutly or even affiliate with a given religion to claim a strong moral, ethical, or personal belief. According to the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title 4 prohibits discrimination on the basis of religion in public schools and colleges and guarantees equal education opportunities regardless of religion. This includes protection against discrimination and harassment on the basis of religion and spans all religious affiliation. Because Title 28 specifically calls for the objection in writing, access is available to an example religious exemption form by simply Googling "health freedom Pennsylvania religious exemption" or UPSD and religious exemption form. Please note that an explanation of your religious or firmly held belief is not required. Just a statement saying that one is held. I did look around Franklin Regional's website and found a tab for immunization requirements as currently set by the Department of Health, as well as a tab for forms. Neither tab mentioned or included a link to any religious exemption form for immunizations, not one that's already out there or one that Franklin Regional has put up as a standard form for themselves. So I'm requesting the addition of a link for a form to the website as a courtesy, as a facilitation, and an acknowledgement of the Title 4 and Title 28 that I know Franklin Regional respects here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, that's it for public comments. Solicitor comments.
I have nothing for public session.
Thank you, Mr. Shulton. Okay, move on to consent agenda items. Ratification of natural gas, Mr. Perry.
Good evening. The first item that I have for you tonight is the ratification of an agreement between the district and Snyder Brothers. This would be for the purchase of the natural gas commodity. As a reminder, the district participates in a joint purchasing consortium for natural gas with other schools in Westmoreland County. This would represent the first 20% of the commodity that's anticipated being needed over the period, August of 2023, or September of 2023 through August of 2025. While still slightly higher than what the district has paid over the last 10 years, the price of natural gas has come down dramatically over the last six months. This agreement was dated in January. It's continued to come down since then in communication with Keytech today, who serves as a consultant and a purchasing agent for the consortium. They're anticipating making a recommendation in the coming weeks for another portion of the natural gas anticipated need over the next two years because of the rate that, you know, right now, the winter has been relatively mild, both here and Europe. Storage is at the highest level since it's been since the spring of 2020. So the pricing right now is being viewed as pretty advantageous.
Any questions on natural gas ratification? Student activity clubs and sponsors.
Yes, this is an annual approval item for the clubs, sponsors, and officers for the extracurricular activities that have financial accounts held by the district. Again, this was a recommendation by the district's auditor to have these approved annually so that the board is aware and is approving the clubs for which the district custody's assets.
So my question for you would be just as clarification. These are, the reason this list may change year to year is these are only clubs that have a financial account, not a comprehensive list of all clubs that may be available.
That is correct.
Correct, okay.
Any other questions? Gifts, grants, and donations.
This month, we have $107 to the Fund-A-Mill program from FR staff and $599 in support of the Elementary Science Olympiad from the Spectroscopy Society of Pittsburgh.
Questions on gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers?
This month, we have general fund transfers totaling $4,772.54.
Any questions on budget transfers? Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Dr. Prino, FRSD academic calendar, 2023-24.
In your packet is a proposed academic calendar for 23-24. Highlights include the first day of school being August 23rd. When you look through the course of the year, we will have Columbus Day off, no classes that day. However, staff will have professional development. On November 9th, we will have the annual parent-teacher classes or conferences, followed by professional development on the 10th as required by, as required by the contract. On the 11th is Veterans Day. And so essentially, the 10th is serving as the Veterans Day holiday that we're identifying. Thanksgiving, we will have that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday off. And when you look at December, we will be off the, our last day prior to the Christmas holiday is the 22nd. The 25th is a contractual holiday, as well as the 26th and 27th. And then if you look at New Year's, that, the contractual holiday, New Year's Eve is on Sunday. New Year's Day is on Monday. Contractual holiday would actually be on the 2nd. So the classes would resume on January 3rd. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, no classes, will be on January 15th. Looking at President's Day of February, that would be on the 19th. In March, the spring break would be the 29th. The of March, the 1st of April and the 2nd of April. Forwarding into May, it would be a traditional Memorial Day, the 20, that Monday off. And then the last day of school and graduation day would be a half day, would be set for May 31st. A little earlier than usual. I know in the past, we've always tried to graduate that first Friday. But given a number of factors, looking at that, we've heard from a lot of people that prefer the earlier. A lot of times, May becomes a pretty hectic time in school. And we think that we better utilize the time upfront and the potential for a major project at the Sloan Bridge. It will shut that bridge down. We want to make sure that we're not, they believe it'll last the duration of the summer. We want to make sure that we're out of the way and that they're not in our way. And so we know when they were doing some work at that Sloan Bridge, it was sort of tumultuous here in the fall. And we want to make sure, to the best of our ability, we prevent any conflict between that construction project and in our transportation routes. So any questions?
Any questions on the calendar? Okay, thank you, Dr. Prino. Dr. Delp, policy review.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, in your packets, we are bringing to you three policies that we were reviewing at the policy committee. Policy 236.1, Threat Assessment. That is due to legal liability and the annual review of that particular policy. Policy 805, Emergency Preparedness and Response. There were changes to this policy, actually two, since the last adoption, that were in regards to the hours of training and moving from what was previously a five-year cycle of particular trainings for student safety. There are now three mandated hours per year, specifically as it relates to given blocks of training that we must do every year now. So that was the major change with respect to policy 805. Policy 805.2, School Security Personnel. Again, this is a, making sure that we are properly training our school security personnel.
Any questions on policy?
Just kind of a point of note for threat, for other members of the board here for regarding threat assessment. We did have a bit of a discussion in the policy meeting regarding those hours. Those hours will be taken away from professional development hours that teachers have to do. That a lot of these updates were changing to annual training and annual reporting, which was previously on that five-year cycle that Dr. Delp talked about. Now making that an annual requirement, the state made in the training guidelines, which kind of comes back to our, a little bit of our public comments. We even had a bit of a discussion on Item 3 and the training portion of it, where it does offer up training for identifying and avoiding racial, cultural disability bias when identifying these, these issues in our student population. We talked about different trainings that would include such things as socioeconomic cognitive bias with our teachers. The problem being is these are all state mandates and the state trainings are given by the state. And if you do those within the only certain allotted hours that your teachers are given with their professional development, they won't count towards this requirement that the state mandates towards you. So when you try to go above and beyond, you don't get anywhere doing it with that. So that's kind of where that discussion was, not necessarily in the reporting portion of it, which we can, as a board, ask for those things without making a significant change when we do our annual report from, from the, from the administration. But that's where we talked about it at the, at the committee level in that regard. And most of this comes from the state. They pull it from the professional development that our teachers are allotted each year, and now they've made it an annual issue.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Delp.
The next item I bring to you is a second read of the policies that we brought forth at the previous school board meeting last month. You see there on your handout, a list of the policies that we went over at that time.
Any questions on policy and second read? Personnel.
In your packets, you will see a number of personnel items. There is one correction on point 5 under Certified Personnel. That leave is actually at the intermediate school, not the primary school. Just a point of clarification. But there are a number of appointments and transfers, leaves of absence, substitutes, resignations, and retirements.
Questions on personnel? Thank you, Dr. Delp. Mr. Matzie, Dishwashing Machine Replacement.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have the middle school replacement dishwasher. This machine is met its life. It's time to be changed. Parts are coming unavailable and it's time. Parts, we tried to get parts for something before, took over six months to get. Luckily, we stole some parts and made some parts up. But that's where we stand now on the middle school. And this will be coming out of the kitchen fund.
Questions on the dishwasher for the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, next, dishwasher replacement for the high school.
And the next item is the same thing with the high school. It's time to replace it. We've gotten three competitive bids, and these are the bids that came in for both, both schools at the cheapest price through Co-Stars and other companies. Yes, sir. One's a bigger unit than the other. The high school unit's bigger than the middle school for the kids, the capacity of the school. It would be in the summer. There's a lead time on getting them. This, there's a lead time on getting them. This is part of '22, '23 capital. Dollars. Yes, in the summertime.
What's the average life of these units normally?
Roughly 25 years, 20 to 25 years. And these both have, both have passed that.
So these are both pretty much senior day then?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. What, out of curiosity, what brand?
Hobart.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Matzie. Now on to your capital plan.
Your consideration, you have the capital plan in your packet. This would be for the '23-24 capital plan. If you have any questions?
It was in your packet. I'm assuming everybody looked over. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Matzie on your capital plan?
Yes, I have two.
Sure.
The gym floor, how old is our gym floor?
Gym floors, they haven't been refinished in over 30 years, from my.
20 years, okay.
This will be completely refinished, full sand like we did the high school.
Okay, okay, great. And I think it's great that FAST is going to be contributing to the blocks, the swim blocks.
Yes.
And I, I'd like to see other types of equipment be funded with our partners in the community. For example, the band instruments, the gym floor, stadium lights, any kind of athletic upgrades. I think that we need to find, and this is more directed to the board, that I think we need to find alternative ways of funding these types of projects through alumni capital fund, it doesn't work. Through alumni capital fund drives. I mean, there's not much we can do about this now. But moving forward, I'd really like to investigate ways that we can raise capital to improve band instruments and, you know, the stadium lights, these athletic upgrades. Also, can you tell me what curricular equipment is? When you, you stated for $10,000. It's just generic.
Items that would be worn throughout, worn, worn out throughout the year, just like with the carpet and things like that, things that wear.
But not technology?
No, no, this is not technology.
Random bookshelves or something like that? Okay. And the furniture that you're asking for, is that for the new areas or the, the new areas that we were putting in the middle school? Or is this?
No, the, the things that got put in the middle school was done through a grant.
Right. That's not part of the upgrade. This is for.
No, this is just for, again, wear and tear, things that break throughout the year.
Okay, great. And one last question. The campus lighting, do we have a return on investment? Do we have ROI on the?
Just on the, on the campus?
But yeah, you, you mentioned that there's a savings if we replace those lights. Do we have an ROI, an estimated ROI?
On that, no, because we won't be able to do the whole campus for that money. We've started to replace, you notice around the high school horseshoe, when lights went around there, we started to replace with LED now instead of replacing a ballast and a bulb. One, we save the energy, two, the labor in not changing them for five to seven years. With, with our electric going up, almost doubling last year, as Mr. Perry has stated in previous meetings, anything we can do right now with electric is going to be a savings to the district.
To answer your question, typically, the energy savings approach 50%. To answer your question, typically, the energy savings approach 50%.
50%.
Any other questions?
You don't get back the cost of long-term.
Right, right.
It depends how long the lights are on.
We did the senior center in Murrisville about six years ago. I mean, you need to, you need to.
More than 10 years?
Yes. Because when you eliminate the ballast, you eliminate the heat.
And that, as far as the stadium lighting, we had a fairly long discussion about the history of the, of the lighting that was there, the purpose, whether it was failing currently or not. Is the original lighting that was put in in 1990?
90.
90? That was, and it was used at that point.
No, no.
Was it?
No, no.
Standards were used.
The standards?
Came from Wesco.
Okay, so then it was put, the standards were used. Okay, so part, just a little tiny part.
But it's ballast and bulb 1500.
It is.
Correct. So part of the discussion was, I correct that, that it was put in, the new ballast new, new at that point, in 1990. So at this point, the, a lot of the discussion was, you know, you, you have a projected energy savings. We talked about a big number of that. Improve quality of the lighting. You can't always, you know, who's accountable for the exact number of the energy savings over time, but there is also, Mr. Matzie talked about the replacement work that goes into those individual bulbs every year. People that have been on the field have said about the, where, there is a quality issue with the, the lighting system that's there now versus putting it in, having the savings that is a fairly significant number based on the estimates over a 10-year period. It was a potential, what would you say? What's it?
It was potential before last year of 100,000, but with our costs going up and doubled, I would have to say over 10 years, anywhere from 150 to $200,000. We've replaced over 110 bulbs in 10 years. There are 1,000 watt bulbs. That doesn't count the ballast, that doesn't count the rental for the JLG for the week to get up there week, you know, yearly. And normally, it's a one time a year, but if we lose a lot of bulbs, we'd have to get it again, depending on sports season. The, the packages we looked at have over a 10-year warranty maintenance free. We won't have to do anything to those bulbs except make a phone call.
Is, is this a retrofit of the existing reflectors?
No, it's, the only thing that needs to happen is our poles will need to be inspected by an engineer, by the companies we have contacted, that would need that stamped. And then it would be most likely a crane coming in, bringing a unit in and bolting directly to our poles.
I'm not removing the whole upper substructure of the pole.
The whole lighting rack.
Any other questions for Mr. Matzie?
Did I ask what a chiller is? A move for a chiller?
A what?
Chiller.
A chiller?
Yeah.
Chiller, go ahead.
It's the air conditioner.
It's heat. Okay, thank you, Mr. Matzie. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn the, oh, wait a minute, actually.
I just want to address the one public comment from Mrs. Ling. Of course, I, I knew something was out there, so I was out here. That is actually out on our webpage. If you go under the section under immunizations, down at the bottom, it says medical, the eight-month provisional enrollment, blah, blah, blah. Medical, philosophical, religious exemptions must be submitted in writing to the school nurse. On our, on our, hold on. On our form around that. On the document for, for the, for the, for the vaccines, it says, "The parent guardian must provide a written request to the school for religious or philosophical exemption." And then there's a section where, on the website, where it says, "Additional comments, parent guardians, student health providers, all they have to do is write their, their exemption on, on that form." So it is out there. Dr. Rogowski was able to get that to me, and so I don't have exactly to post it up here, but I, I thought we had that out there, but it's out there, but.
Thank you. I did search for it. I couldn't find it on there.
So.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dr. Rogowski. All right. Now I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bill, second by Ed. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. We're going to move into the committee, the voting meeting. Monday, February 13th, Franklin Regional School District's regular meeting. We're going to stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading the mission statement, "We, the Franklin Regional School Community, sorry for excellence, learning, achievement and citizenship in all we do." We were not in executive session between meetings naturally. Okay, Ms. Wolf, roll call.
Dr. Echelman-Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Mederator?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Yant?
Here.
Mr. Yingling?
Here.
Mr. Kremsky are not here this evening.
Okay, 7-2, we have a quorum. Okay, I need approval of the committee, the whole, committee, the whole meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2023, and the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2023.
So moved, Scott.
Moved, Scott.
Second.
Second, Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Future dates and upcoming topics. Dr. Prino. Did it sneak up on you that?
No, you didn't. So upcoming meetings include February 22nd, 2023, a finance committee meeting at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices. On March 15th, we'll have a curriculum committee meeting, 5:00 PM in the administrative offices. On March 20th, we'll have a committee, the whole and regular board meeting at 7:30 here at the Murrisville Municipal Building at 7:30 PM. Upcoming topics include seventh grade English novels, senior high school course, conceptual physics, policy second read, WIU operating budget for 23, 2023, 2024, technology plan 2023, 2024, gifts, grants and donations, budget transfers and personnel. And that concludes future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. Can't even move around the financial reports. I need a motion to approve the treasures report for January 2023.
So moved, Scott.
Moved, Scott.
Second.
Second, Ed?
Bill.
Bill, I'm sorry.
Ed's that way.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. List of bills. Paid bills, general fund of $630,684.83. Athletic fund, $5,042.11. For a total of paid bills of $635,726.94. Unpaid bills, general fund of $651,287.11. Technology fund, $3,417. Capital reserve fund, $28,702.63. Athletic fund, $42,546.69. Construction fund, zero. Total unpaid bills are $720,953.43. For a grand total of $1,361,680.37. Food service of $128,276.50. For grand total, including food service of $1,489,956.87. Need a motion to approval of bills.
So moved.
Moved, Bill.
Second.
Second, Ed. Comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Solicitors' comments again?
I have none, but you skipped public comment.
I'm coming to it now.
Okay.
We had no public comments signed up. Consent agenda, anybody want to remove consent agenda items for separate action by board members? We have a total of 10 consent agenda items, one through 10. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to have one item separated from this, personnel agenda.
I need a motion to approve consent agenda items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9 and 10. Moved by Tracy?
Second.
Second by Mark.
Mark.
Any other comments? All in favor of consent agenda items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9 and 10? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Okay, personnel. You have a comment on personnel?
I'll just, I'll be abstaining.
Okay. In other words, you're going to abstain on personnel. Anybody else have any comments on personnel? You have a team, Ms. Wolf, afterward, you have to sign a consent form. Okay. Need a motion to approve personnel agenda.
So moved.
Moved, Bill. Second.
Second.
Scott. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I need a roll call for capital plan.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, pardon me?
I thought he abstained, so it'd be 6.
He did.
6-0-1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right behind you there.
Okay, I need a motion for roll call vote for the capital plan from Mr. Matzie.
So moved.
Moved, Vince.
Second.
Second, Ed. Ms. Wolf, roll call vote.
Dr. Echelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Mederator?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yant?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries 7-0. Hearing no other comments, you need a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Moved, Bill. Second.
Second.
Vince. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0.
I'm sorry, what?